It's the 12th, right? And we're going to get started. This is Quas City Council work session for June 12th, 2017. And on the agenda tonight, which I don't have in front of me, capital improvement plan and financial management policies. And we have Jen Olson, our finance director here. Want to start us off?
Thank you. Tonight's topics on the committee work session are the capital improvement plan for 2018 through 2020, and then the updates to the financial management policy. So to start us off, under the capital improvement plan that has been proposed, there were, at the last work session of the council, there were questions asked about, some about specific projects, and then there was general feedback about the actual new capital budget document and some other additional information that was requested. The council Q and A document is what I'm referring to right now. And the next step would be to perhaps go through, because those were specific to projects, is to take a look at those questions and then to see if the administration's response was adequate enough, or if there would be follow-up questions that might be in order. So if everyone is taking a look at the council Q and A, the first question related to the impervious-
Excuse me, Jen. Where in the packet was that?
That was supplemental posting.
Supplemental posting.
It's on the website. That was an update.
So if I'm looking at the split-screen version of the agenda packet, under the Agenda Bill 7313, there is View Council Questions and a link to that.
Did you find it, Paul?
I'm getting there, thank you.
All right. So responses, and this is going to be the case for a few of the questions or feedback that the council asked for, is that we're still working on responses because analysis and there's some work in progress. This is one of the challenges with an offline system, and especially around comparing the prior capital plan to what's currently being proposed, and then further making note of what, are our scope changes to projects, and then projects that had been authorized in the 2017 budget. So in the first question regarding the project for impervious surface equipment-
I have a question before you go on. Are you seeing, I understand that some of the full answers aren't there, but are all the questions listed? Or are some of the questions not being up here because you haven't gotten answers to them yet?
No, we believe that we captured all of the questions, and in the response, it will say that it is still a work in progress for providing that response.
Got you. Thank you.
So I'm going to skip down to the project EQ. This is equipment for storage covers, the question about only one with regards to not being covered and can it be moved? And the response is that it, with regard to the site not being developed, and that's why there is no cover on that one, and yes, covers are portable. Next project, question regarding the compact excavator, about if this project is deferable. The response was that the item is not indefinitely deferable, and the deferable term came from the priorities in capital budget policy. So yes and no, it's deferable. Question regarding the third dispatch radio console about quantifying data for the equipment. There were some attached slides. I think this documentation didn't make it into the response attached with the Q and A.
There's a couple of those, Jen. We'll talk about slides.
All right. We'll ensure that they get provided to the council if that's the case. There were two questions surrounding the ITS cameras, about why get new cameras? And then do we need more cameras? And those questions there about how those cameras are used, or the responses how they're used, and the issues surrounding software annual upgrade information. Next project is the overlay pavement management program, the unconstrained PCI.
Well, we've got quite a few. So maybe we should just hit them, each one, and see if people have questions. If any council members have questions beyond how they're answered.
Okay.
So we'll leave the burden to the council members to raise their hand.
Ask additional questions.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Any additional questions on the overlay project? Okay. The Gilman Boulevard project, any additional questions there?
I have a question, Jen. So I don't have the actual document open itself, but I don't have an issue with the description, the response description. I think it goes more to, can we clarify in a project name like TR 016 Gilman Boulevard? Can we add something that shows what it actually is and it's not actual construction? I think that's still confusing on some of the item descriptors.
Okay.
Is that sometimes we're studying, sometimes we're doing pre-engineering, and sometimes we're building. And so I thought the number looked a little bit low for everything we're doing, and when I read the answer, it's because we're doing whatever you want to call it. redesign, I'm not sure. So it's really with the way the CIP project is described in the title that I have an issue with.
Any other feedback on that project? Okay, then I'll move on to the project, the Northwest Newport Way SR 900, Southeast 54th Street. Then we have the Newport Way Maple to Sunset project. The three trails crossing improvements. Multiple questions on this project. Anything additional?
So Jen, the last question was, or sorry, the middle question. Project description talks about eliminating left turns off Juniper onto Rainier. And the question was, is that part of the project that's funded under the dollar value in the project name? And I don't, it just says its project sheet needs to be updated to reflect this. So I'm not sure. Are those turning movements restricted? Because that was something that never came up in committee when we talked about the project and the development agreement. That's where the question went.
I'm going to ask-
You're going to call a friend?
I am going to phone a friend. So Sheldon, would you be able to-
The left turns are not restricted from Juniper to Rainier.
Okay. So that was an old description. Thank you. All right. The next project is the Providence Point project. Any question, though?
No, I think it's, I'm sorry, we're just going to clarify that as we go along.
There's actually two questions on the Providence Point. So I just want to make sure that both of those questions, those responses are adequate.
Same answer. It's sort of, it's, I don't know. It's kind of a non-answer, but that's okay. I understand it. Small.
And maybe we can talk about that in the financing or the funding.
Sure.
Because that is a project that does require funding in order to move forward from a debt perspective. Okay. Now we're on to the Tibbetts Valley Park frontage project.
Yes, I have a question on that. That was mine. So when we talked about that project, and Bob, you said very clearly that we're required to do that street improvement as part of the project. And that was an absolute, so we had to plan for that. And so my question is, why was this four years out? And the answer basically said, we changed the, you know, the classification of the project, basically. And so my question is, if it's a requirement, it's our rules, we got to walk the talk, we got to follow our rules, to say, we can do something and wait for four years to meet our own requirements. That feels very odd to me when we make everybody else meet our requirements. And this answer just said we classified it as something else, and I'm not sure that satisfied me.
Sure. Let me just add a few informational points, and we'll see if that gets what you need. We determined to look at the project in two pieces for a few different reasons. One was skate park as park improvement project, knowing that yes, it would trigger frontage improvements, and that those frontage improvements by themselves, because of the geographic limits of the skate park project, were going to be incomplete in nature for that block. And so we said, what if we then acknowledged the requirement and set that aside because that piece didn't have funding, and treat it as a street improvement project, and allow us more time to plan for that street improvement project because we need to incorporate the pieces to the east and the west as well, to tie into 900 and then to 12 ultimately. Plus, we understood we had some dynamics we wanted to work out with King County in particular, about the frontage in front of the surface park and ride. And we had ongoing conversations with the developer on the TOD project, potential TOD project across the street. So we wanted to integrate all those pieces and hopefully do road improvements once and get the level of partnership, whether that's just collaborative or financial partnership in place so that we could move forward in the most thoughtful way. So we've acknowledged that it's a need, but we want to build it into a more comprehensive project so that we do it right.
Okay. I understand that. I'm just wondering if that's really where we want to be with that. So that's just my question on that still, because it's waiting four years to meet our own requirement. But, you know, that's the bigger picture, so thank you for that.
All right. Next project is the sensitive land acquisition. Then we're on to the park master planning effort. That question was specific to the building an off-leash dog park. Any further questions? We have the, next project is the splash park.
I have a question. It's not really about the splash park. It's about how projects get added to this list. And so it says, the answer here is, the question is, is this project in a prior plan or adopted master plan? And I asked the question, and I probably also asked, if not here, I asked it on Saturday, about the new idea for a central park in the Central Issaquah area. It says the splash park was identified in the adopted 2015 PROST and also was a project within the adopted 2016, 2017 CFPs, which is the capital facilities plan. So how do projects get on this list? So I see here that it was on the, it was in the PROST, the splash park. But the second part of the answer is, well, it was adopted in the 2016, 2017 CFPs. Again, it's not so much about the splash park. But it's, my concern is, or my question is about, we have a very long document with lots of projects, and if a project can be added here, and we somehow miss the eagle eyes of seven council members, and then a couple of years later, it shows up, somebody notices, I don't remember this. Oh, yes, well, it was added, it was in the CIP a couple of years ago. You just happened to miss it. So anyway, the higher up question is, how do things get added to the list? Do we need to have had some sort of policy consideration first? We also have a water treatment plant in here as well. So you get the drift of my question.
I can start with a partial response to that. I think that there's some comments from a variety of us. Is that oftentimes, projects that go into the capital improvement plan come from those master plans. So the water, wastewater, stormwater master plans, transportation master plan, that's where you have the tip, is pretty much a mirror in the transportation section. Same thing for a park master plan. So that's often where it starts. It also would come from a, if it comes from an initiative from the community, or that it's something that is seen as a need to complete, complete some investments in our capital assets. So it comes from a variety of places. So-
The things that you're listing seem to be previously adopted policy, either in a plan or somewhere, right? So then where does something like that central park in the Central Issaquah area, so that was in the PROST?
That would be considered a master plan that would inform the broader capital improvement plan, which combines, the goal is to combine them all into one comprehensive place as a guide towards those capital investments that we make over that period of time.
Okay. I guess because the PROST 1, I guess we're calling, the PROST 1, I thought, I thought we sort of bifurcated the purposes, those efforts. The one was, the first one ended up to be to satisfy maybe requirements that the state had in order for us to qualify for monies. Right? The second one was supposed to be PROST 2, a park strategic plan, where I would have thought maybe new projects would show up, not in the first one. But maybe that's my misinterpretation or misunderstanding.
Yeah, I can take a crack at this. I guess first to echo what Jen said. Yeah, typically, and I think our hope as staff is that any, that, in the case of parks, the park strategic plan informs the six-year CIP, which then obviously informs any capital budget decisions. As I mentioned in the introduction a couple of months ago, it's interesting for us sequencing-wise, as we're doing this new six-year CIP process, we're in the, we don't have a park strategic plan adopted yet. That second one you're referring to.
Right.
So we very intentionally took the projects in the first one, park strategic plan, PROST 1, as you were referring to, and really went through the process with that. And we didn't want to amend, or change, or abbreviate, but know that what's going to be coming out of this park strategic plan when it's adopted later this year, it may inform these projects. And there may be a need to, like I said, in some cases, bundle projects or change projects. So I understand in the park sense, there is a, we know there's this bigger strategic plan coming, but again, we didn't want to try and create new projects in the CIP effort.
And I'm happy to supplement that, too. Because I think part of it is, that first effort, it took, it really was kind of a needs assessment. So it did take national standards, and then said, based on population and those types of things, these are the number of soccer fields that you ought to have. These are the numbers of the, but what it did not do is put prioritization around there, or even give descriptors or emphasis on where those items should go. And so I think that was the big kind of failure part of that plan, was that it was just missing that, and that's why we bifurcated it into the PROST 2. But that first needs assessment, I mean, the facts are still what the facts are in terms of what the gaps are.
So that's a good answer, and I understand all of that. I think my discomfort is something as huge as a central park, when my, I don't feel like we actually deliberated something like that. And so to have it be put now into the, a new CIP doesn't feel right to me. And I'm just one of seven, but it feels like all of a sudden we ended up with this 20-some million-dollar park that we've never talked, you know, deliberated about or talked to the public about, even though it ended up to be in a public document. And I feel that about several projects. But I just thought I'd start with, since the splash park was the first thing that was on this list, that, I mean, we haven't all talked about that either. Not that it's not a good project, we just haven't talked about it. So anyway.
Just to add on to that, we, I didn't feel like we had a very substantial discussion at all when PROST 1 went in, because we deemed it to be an exercise we were going through to ensure we wouldn't be at risk for losing any grant funding. But I don't even know that I looked at the list of projects very closely. And so we've not had a discussion. And what I would prefer to see in this draft CIP, any project that wasn't on the formally approved CIP be italicized or highlighted or something. Because there is stuff on here we've never talked about, ever. And so that's kind of shocking. And recognizing we're talking to people who have come in mid-process, you wouldn't know that. So, but I don't feel like we've talked about several of the projects, nor has the community ever come in and talked and said, oh, you're talking projects tonight. I see there's a splash park. I want to put my two cents in. There's been no visibility on it. So we need to have that conversation for everything that's new in the last CIP, which is 2012 or whatever it is.
I'd like to, one of the, well, a couple of things. The capital budget, or the CIP, is essentially the planning tool for five-year period and then longer. So there's certainly, there's opportunity to shift around if there, if we've not had enough community conversation about a particular project, even though it has been identified in other master plans, we certainly can shift it out into the later years. But if we know that it's something that we do at some point, want to bring to light to talk about this with the community, and that's essentially the kickstart with the CIP, is to start to have those conversations about, are these the projects in the right years? Because it is a planning tool, and there hasn't been any, you know, final authorized commitment to actually go forward and do the project. The other challenge, just to remind the council about the comparison from one CIP to the next, is that that, we have an opportunity going forward because our, because we are offline. We have some heavy lifting, if you will, to get you that information so that you can see in an adopted plan, from one adopted plan to another, what is new, what has changed, scope of work. So we're continuing to work on that so that we can provide that level of information. But I just wanted to make sure that, Emily, did you have something to add to that?
Well, I would think that the process would be the other way around. Rather than, rather than moving projects out to later years if we haven't had a community conversation about them, would be to take them off the list. And then after we have PROST 2 adopted, then if it ends up in PROST 2, then it goes into the CIP next year. Because next year will be the 2019 to 2023, right?
Well, the actual capital budget is actually biennial.
Okay.
So that will now, we've kind of got the off-year in 2019 is to do that, is to have that public engagement effort, to go to the public and the community and ask what their feedback is. Do they, is there projects that they, you know, that's going to bring up projects that we don't have on here? That's going to provide feedback about whether or not these are projects that are supported. And so that essentially, with the new capital budget policy, what that did is it gave us that timeline for gathering that public input on these projects. The nice thing about the planning effort in the capital budget is that, yes, that's what we can do, is we can remove projects and essentially, you know, note that, that they would be kind of red flagged then to ensure that they're in the next CIP, but also then to have a conversation with the community during that off-year about these particular projects that are maybe of interest to the community.
And it gets back to my comment initially, and that was that we have a splash park. It's identified in PROST 1, but it was also a project within the adopted 2016, 2017 CFPs. So using the fact that it was in a document just like this to tell the city council that it's already been sort of adopted as policy. And so it's, to me, it's just, I'm concerned about that circle, that this starts a circle and always ends up here because it just ended up on this list. And, I mean, I know I'm not probably saying this in a very articulate, intelligent way, but I think you all know what I mean. You know, just having things put on here, and then later on say, oh, but it was on here. To me, that's not a policy. This is a policy, we're adopting this. That doesn't mean that we've adopted each one of these things as policy. We haven't discussed-
That's right.
-everything.
It is a plan, yeah, a guideline for potential.
Yeah.
The only other thing that I would offer is, we're in a little bit more awkward spot than usual with the parks plan. How the CIP should ideally work is that you have community conversation when you're in that big master planning effort, and you come up with these water system plans and park strategic plan, and you've identified needs, and at least from community member perspective, priorities, right? That gets put into those master plans, and then staff sits back and says, okay, how are we going to make this fit into the CIP? Working with finance to make sure that it works year by year from a cost standpoint. And then we put those projects in. That's basically what has happened here, even with PROST 1. Because I could say that our park staff at that time, and years just prior to that, had had those community conversations and input, identified those needs or desires for parks projects, and then put them into PROST 1 that then informed the CFP at the time. That doesn't equate to council having conversations and deciding what the priorities are. And I absolutely agree that the conversations that you all had on both PROST 1 and past year's CFPs maybe haven't allowed you to focus on particular projects and make those policy determinations. Usually when you've made those judgments has come later, after it's actually been part of your adopted capital plan. And then you've decided, okay, are we really ready now to move forward with that project? Shall we agree to this scope, or should we constrain it? What, how much money do we want to allocate to the project? And that's, that's when you've gotten into really making those adjustments, either electing not to go with a project, changing the project in some way, pushing the project out, seeking more community input on it to refine the scope. That's how our process has worked thus far. We're hoping to make changes now, to put more emphasis on community involvement on the master plan, so that when we come to you and we say, okay, we've included it in the CIP, and this is the rationale for it, you have that information, and then you can have a conversation about whether or not to pursue projects in terms of listing them, even listing them in your plan. You can have that conversation during CIP development. But that doesn't, that doesn't mean that you can't also have a policy conversation later when it comes time to, for that project to be taken action on. So you need to establish the budget. You need to go ahead and authorize contract or authorize staff to go and do the design work on that project. You have subsequent opportunities to also determine whether it should remain a project that's listed in our planning documents and it's something that you want to fund.
So a question then, Emily, because I'm not sure what the draft strategic plan looks like for parks. It still feels a bit clunky to me, and I guess it's like in the- It still, it still feels a bit clunky to me and I guess it's like in the strategic plan at the end of that, do we have a list of gaps that we're trying to address and that translates over to a CIP conversation?
Yeah, so in essence, what we're saying now is we didn't want to discount the public input that we have received up to this point. And so we've taken the projects from the past and we've included them in this CIP. But as Jen relayed and Jeff, we know we're getting some new input, right? And we need to incorporate that in the CIP in the future. So we, we have choices here. We could, we could say, don't show any parks plant, projects in the plan for the next two years and let's wait until we get the park strategic plan done and then put those pieces back in. From a financial management perspective, it made sense to us to at least keep what had been on the radar in the plan and try to make sure that we situated all the other pieces from a funding source allocation standpoint. So that's, that's what we've elected to do thus far. But once park strategic plan gets done, we're going to have to come back and say, how do we reconcile that new information with what is in the CIP? And that may mean some of those projects stay, it may mean some of those projects look like lesser priorities should be shifted out, or some of those projects weren't even described or wanted by the community and so we should eliminate them and put these other new things in. Those are the adjustments we can make in the off year, the second year of the CIP because anytime we do a new master planning effort, we're going to have to do that work. We also will be continuing to go out to community and asking for feedback on the projects that are in later years in the CIP. Or those ones that aren't in master plans because they're not connected to one.
I guess the point is that what I would expect to see here instead of, you, you saw it on a 2015 CIP, is that the 2013 Community Citizen Survey identified it as a need. Or Parks and Recreation Staff based on this identified as a need. This is where it feels like it's shown up because you approved it on a list and what you're saying is that's, that's not the way you do it. So I don't think the intent was to say, don't show any parks projects because we're not done a strategic plan. It was more that this looks like it's here because we approved a list a few years ago and what you're telling me, it's here for a different reason. And so maybe the splash park stays, but the comment or the answer to the question is, it's because the 2012 Community Needs Survey identified it.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's the heart of the rationale because we did go back and look at each project and we said, do we still think there's a need?
That's the piece we can't see here, though.
Was there a need before?
Yeah.
And so, yes, it was shown on another list or plan, but it started with, do we, was there a need expressed some point in the past and do we still think that need is present? Because if the answer to that second question had been no, we wouldn't have shown that project.
And because it's such a large project, the Central Park one, I'd like to know where that showed up as a need and how significantly that showed up.
Sure. And I think I can speak for Jeff since Jeff also wasn't here, neither was I. The way that I've heard it is that it was, it was a piece of the Central Issaquah Plan conversations that there would be a need for recreation, community kind of space in Central Issaquah as it developed out. So I think it was mainly from the conversations around Central Issaquah Plan.
So just a little detail follow-up on that. So I guess the way I'm looking at this in particular is, you know, the funding in 18 and 19, right? So, you know, versus out years. And, and so to follow kind of what you're saying is when it's at that level, but in 19, you see $10 million. If it's further out, you know, but in 19, that means someone's doing work on that now. They're thinking about it. Staff is, you know, doing, spending some, some, at least some mental energy on it now. If not next year, they'll just start spending some real energy on it. And that, that means we're not so sure we want that to go. So, so that, that's my question on, on that. And as well as, and, and one more further one. So we list things like a splash park. The one thing I don't see on here that has had a lot of community conversation is a dog park. And I don't see that separately listed as, as an item. So if we're going in with those kinds of conversation, I would think that would be here also. And not, you know, I just referred to in the master plan or something, but, but if splash park has a separate line, I would think dog park would have a separate line also. Because I think there's some push on that at this point in time, the way, with that conversation that you had.
Bill, you made, you made a point about the master plan, that, that project that listed just the master planning effort for those specific projects. And, and that is why the, the dog park doesn't have its own separate project is because it was just identified as not sure yet. But the splash park, if it had been, had been, there's been other, more conversations about a splash park, it appears than perhaps a dog park, but.
If there's anything more you want to add about the dog park versus splash park and when?
Yeah. Sure. More, more about master planning, actually. What we have learned is that it is very important to have those community conversations and scope projects well from the very beginning. And so master planning is part of that. And so instead of thinking about discrete capital projects like splash pad and dog park, we've established a new capital project called master planning for parks. And we think we're going to do that capital project, master planning for parks, every year in the CIP. But each year, we may be focused on asking a different question to our community, like, shall we contemplate building another dog park? Shall we master plan that? And then the next year it might be splash pad and the next year it may be, how do we revamp perk X? So master planning becomes the capital project. We want a budget allocation on an annual budget in our capital plan to do master planning. But within a, a given year, we'll be focused on maybe one particular location or idea. That makes sense. And so we've, we've identified at least, you know, those two that you've spoken about as being top priorities to pursue with the community.
Right. And I'm just, as, as, as people would ask me, they say, because a lot, a lot of pressure on, on dog park, that's not on the list. Splash park is on the list. No one's talked to me about a splash park, but a lot of people talking to me about a dog park.
Yeah.
And so one's on the list and one isn't. So that's just that, you know, and I, I kind of see what you're saying, but that's the question I have to answer.
And it's a great question. And again, the, the delicate balance we tried to make with the CIP that we're doing it pre a park strategic plan, I hear you and I agree. I've heard in my time, off-leash dog park is needed. It was never identified as a capital project. And so we didn't want to, as staff, I didn't want to create a new capital project ahead of the park strategic plan and all the community engagement we're going on right now. And so again, to echo Emily's comments, identifying as a master plan, we know, we would love a staff right out of the gate to begin master planning that, working with the community on how, how, how could we cite that and initiate that next year would be great.
Thank you.
We heard a need for a cat park?
I haven't.
One person keeps asking me, so I'm just going to keep trying.
Yeah, in the, in the context of parks, this has been a good conversation. I know we've, this council's had numerous conversations about, at what point, you know, do we just stop capital investment in parks until we're done with strategic plan or do we not fund certain projects? We had the conversation about Central Park, we had the conversation about Confluence Park earlier in the year. And then, and then I look at this CIP and it lists in 2018, one, two, three, four, five different projects, couple desirable, couple, three of them acceptable, for a total of 1.5 million in spend in 2018. So is this, I mean, is the council at a place where, you know, that kind of follow on our comments? And I think there was a, there seemed to be, and I, we didn't really vote on this, but I think there was a generally accepted position that, okay, let's, let's wait till we have the strategic plan done. We've got, there's, in this plan right here, there's, like I said, there's 1.5 million, including that master planning. And so is there some type of signal we want to give to the administration now about what to do in, as you put together the 2018 budget for parks? You've identified what you think should be there. And I think, I don't know if in the, and we're going to have, this is not going to be our only touch before the CIP is done. So maybe, but, you know, I think by the time we adopt this, we might want to save everybody some time later on down in the budgeting process, whether or not, yeah, you go ahead and, and, you know, make your proposal or hey, we're still, we want to see that strategic plan being completed before we consider more parks investments.
Well, I think, well, I think one of the suggestions was to just delineate what is new, not what was not on the CFP. So what was, so what we have is a combination of what was pulled from the CFP and what was pulled from PROS 1. And so if it was, so what the, whatever the projects were that were in PROS 1 but not in strategic plan, delineate those so it's clear that that's where those came from. That's one.
I agree. So I think that will make better accounting for what we have here in the CIP. I'm, I'm kind of looking forward to the operational budget that we're going to start putting together. Do we want to have a conversation about, about whether or not this, what's identified in scope for 2018 at this point is part of the CIP? Is, you know, you know, that, that's something, you know, we want to signal to go ahead and try to see what you can do in the operational bullet, budget that works or not?
I think it would, well, for me, it would depend on, I don't know which one of these things would be italicized or delineated. So I guess if, if you're asking whether we should send a message to the administration to stay away from items that were not on the CFP that were, but, but showed up in PROS 1, don't fund for those in 2018, that would be a narrower question, you know, in terms of message to send.
Yeah. It, I agree it would be. And I wasn't, wasn't intending it to be that narrow, it was just that capital in general.
So then that would mean we would have to go up and down each one of these and talk about each one of those line items in the park.
And that have, anything proposed for 2018?
Right. Which is quite a lot.
There's five of them.
There was one, something else.
There's a lot of, yeah, 19's a whole different story. There's five of them. You know, there's the Blackberry Park, there's the Creekside Incentive Land purchases. Okay, that's, that's not really development, that's acquisition of land. There's the master park planning, the Confluence Park improvements. Okay, there's one, it's capital for additional Confluence Park improvements, which does have its own master plan. And then the playground equipment replacement. Those are, those are the five right there. So, so, so I just put it out on the table. I think we can, we can put it in the parking lot for right now. I think we're going to have other opportunities to talk about it, but that's a question. Again, I'm just trying to get ahead of something, whether or not there's a preponderance of desire in the council to do what we, what we've talked about before about really restricting capital expenditures for parks until the strategic plan. And we can tell them beforehand if we want that to be reflected in the, in the operational budget or not.
I just went back and quickly opened the PROS 1 thing and I'm just looking at dog park versus splash park. And in here it says that 40% of the citizens surveyed liked the splash park and 68% liked the dog park. So for me reading that, I'm still kind of confused as to how, to go to Bill's point, how did splash park end up and dog park not? So that's even like just from our own PROS document. But my ask was, I had three things. One was, I agree with Stacy that my, I'm a little confused. I want to, just because it showed up in PROS doesn't mean much to me. I want to be able to see what projects are new since the last time this council, a council seriously sat down and looked at parks projects exclusive of PROS. Because I'm, I'm not seeing justification why some of these are there and some of them aren't. My other two things were, I don't think I was ever a proponent of holding off on capital spending on parks because strategic plan wasn't done. The two votes that caused me some great concern was when we have overruns of budgets and overruns of estimates and we just go to whatever fund we can to pull the pieces together to continue with it. That's what I had heartburn with. I just think for every penny you're spending over the dollars you had allocated, something else you're not going to get done in the future. And the second part of that had to do with mitigation funds. I felt like that seems like every time we had a hole in a project budget, we backfilled it with mitigation. And then we had a report out last year at the beginning of budget, we may have drained the fund. So that, those are my two concerns. It wasn't no capital projects. I think we have ways to fund some, but it had to do with estimate, bids coming in above estimates, how do you fund that? And using your mitigation fund, when and where are you using it for? Those are my big concerns. So I'm in favor of having capital parks projects listed even while the strategic plan's being developed. That's my opinion.
There's a, there's a lot here that we weren't maybe necessarily anticipating, talking about tonight or in this, quite in this level. I, I have concerns about talking about anything that we don't already have, that isn't already in the pipeline without having PROS 2 in place. Because I feel like the conversation with the public is, it's, it's a tough conversation because I don't have, like in some senses, I'm inside a car with, you know, papered over the windshield and I'm sitting at the steering wheel and like, well, you know, we're still moving forward. Well, yeah, but, you know, there could be a tree right in front of you. So I, that makes, that concerns me. And I will also add, on the subject of, of dog parks, when last I had a contested race, go take the Wayback Machine to 2009, the number two issue that I had after traffic was dog parks, absolutely. On, you know, let's say, I probably only knocked on 500 doors, but it was the number two issue in the public. So I certainly think that when we have our conversation about long-term plans, whenever that is, we need to have a robust conversation about dog parks. There's a lot of people that love their dogs that really feel like this is a service that's critically missing from our city.
Okay, so move on. We'll come back once I clear my head.
We'll, we'll come back to direction more.
Sure.
From a capital budget standpoint, the idea was to talk about or to, to develop this, the capital improvement plan before the operating budget so that it would inform that. So it certainly is something that we would be looking for direction about if there is something that, that needs to be taken out, shifted, that we, that we would put it in the plan in some other alternative way than has been proposed here. So certainly that is what we would like to see, to get direction from the council. But I'm going to, I'm going to work through the rest of the projects to make sure that we're, that we're capturing all the feedback. So we have, we're on the Central Issaquah Significant Park, we were on master plan, we were on splash park, we got some more parks, we're on Central Issaquah Significant Park Plaza, we've got Confluence Park. And then I'll just kind of ask if there is additional questions or feedback on Confluence Park.
Can we go back to Central Issaquah Park?
Oh, sure.
So the question was, why isn't the developer paying for it? That was the, I don't know that I got an understanding answer.
And I was the one who writ, wrote that response. My attempt in responding to that is trying to identify funding for an unscoped project. I tried to respond by saying, it's likely park impact fees or park mitigation fees would be part of a funding package that would go for that, for that project.
I'm still kind of stuck on this one because I went back and read the Central Issaquah Task Force, the Central Issaquah Plan and I don't see it and I just, to me, it's, I don't really know where this one came from. Hard to, hard to decide to include such a big thing on it when I only know where it came from.
It hits me as well.
Yes, it does.
I can, I can certainly go back. I know, my, my understanding is there was a lot of conversation with staff. I believe this project too is in. I, I will double check, but I believe it might also have been in the CFP, the prior year CFP project as well. I think it was identified as Central Issaquah Urban Vitality Center, I believe was the name.
Yes.
I think it was from the anchor project.
I was going to say, it definitely was discussed in Economic Vitality Commission meetings way back when, as, and anchor project and this was one of those things that was discussed back then. It didn't get to any solution, I remember, but it was, it was discussed, I can tell you.
Well, now I like it.
So I think what we're getting on is it was discussed there. I know our parks planner did receive that input and worked with ED and came up with just a conceptual concept. I don't know that's been adopted in any master plans, but I think it was going to be part of the conversation as part of PROS 2. I don't think there's any intent to get ahead of ourselves, I think, as they said, just kind of in this in-between period on this project. So I did want to, there was a comment before. So there is one project that is not in a parks plan that is important that we do, which is the Blackberry Park. So you're So you remember when we bought that, there was a deficient playground on there. So just from a risk management standpoint, we either, and we did get money from the county to do that. So either we just got to take it out and not put it back, or we should use that money which was intended for and go ahead and replace that. And we would do kind of a community survey like we did in the last playground. But I, so even though it may not be in PROST, that is something that I think we just got a concern about that we're going to have to get done.
So I guess what would make me happy with some of this stuff on that, like, not Blackberry, I'm good with Blackberry, but like on our major one, if that $10 million didn't show up in 2019, if we're at this stage of the thing, I don't see we should have funding, you know, popping up in 18 or 19 when we're at this stage of the game. That, that would make me more comfortable. And I need a project of this, at this level that doesn't have any, you know, much discussion.
I was going to say, I was going to say plus one, and because we're, there's a lot that's unfunded. And so this is, I agree with Bill's comments.
Yeah, so I'm not even comfortable having it in the plan, that one. I think if it was a smaller amount project, I think it would lessen the heartburn. But I think that, but maybe not really. I'm concerned that we haven't had community conversations that are, something popping, you know, being suggested in a community survey or being talked about at one of the commissions or being talked about as a good idea with staff. I mean, those are things, I hear that and I think anything could come up on the list and I'm just uncomfortable with that. And I realize things could pop up on the list, but something that's, you know, almost $30 million and just moving the $10 million to, $10 million to a couple of years later, I don't see that that does anything. That just, to me, that just says, you know, we're telling the administration, we like the project, we just don't want to pay for it right now. And I don't think we've even talked about what that project looks like. And Jeff even said, this is an unscoped project and we don't know what it is. We don't know anything about it. So, you know, I, I appreciate, I couldn't support that. I would want, I want that one off the list. So, yeah. I think one of the conversations we've had with staff, and I hear it playing out here tonight, is this dilemma of which thing goes first, right? This is a planning tool. If we were to scope every project, you know, get, get everything refined, do the community engagement, and then come to you and put it on the planning tool, that's one way to approach it. Another way is to identify needs, but then say, we need to make those needs present. We need to, we need your blessing to go and have those community conversations to further do scope and engagement and determine cost. Because there's always a planning phase of every capital project. And so that's, that's what you see. You see, you see pieces of both. You see projects that are just conceptual because we've understood there's a need out there and, and we're trying to get at least enough buy-in from the council to say, yeah, let's go analyze that further, let's have those community conversations. And then you have projects where we've already taken some of those steps and now we have better scope, cost, et cetera, for those projects. The CIP is a planning tool that brings together both of those levels of projects. And that's, that's where it gets hard because it is a little, you know, chicken and egg.
And I was just going to say, part of this is just valuable for us to have the council have this conversation. So, I mean, I think I could make an argument that Confluence Park serves the same exact purpose. But it has been brought up by one of our commissions, it's been, had some community conversation. And so it is good to have this, doesn't, you know, like you said, you could just take it out or you could delay it down the road, but it's, there's no real opportunity other than this kind of process and the planning review to have a conversation with the policymakers on whether or not it should be of importance or not. But you are right, at some point, you know, if you start to get into that two-year, three-year window, then the staff is going to invest a little bit more time in it. So if that's something you want us to push off a year, I don't, that helps prevent that. Even though there still needs to be a conversation, is this even a good idea or not?
Well, I don't even know where the number comes from. I mean, we've heard the words, some sort of a central park, and all of a sudden it's $28 million. If it's going to be a planning tool, I mean, we haven't even talked about it. So I don't even, I don't, I mean, it could be, what is it? Could it really be 3 million? Could it be 50 million? So it's just such an unknown that.
There is a worksheet, I think, that I got.
Get it.
Yeah, but it's, it's still, you're right. So it's pretty general. I think they started with what's a piece of land cost in the community. And then if you were to have just a general scoping, like X amount of hardscape and then, you know, certain, you're just kind of using ballpark numbers at this point without even going into significant time and doing an evaluation and let alone the community involvement.
Yeah, well, I can go on and on about the reasons. I mean, if I have to go out into the, on the sidewalk tomorrow and explain to somebody why it's on here, I would say, I don't know, don't worry about it. It is, but we are not planning for it. So I just, yeah, it feels disingenuous to me because we haven't had that conversation. But maybe that's just me. So I think, so that's, I think we have to decide what next, what's next. Jen, help us out.
Well, what's next, and that, I just would echo what Bob has said, is that if there is the, you know, if you're not ready yet for this to be at this level, you know, at this stage in the, in the proposed CIP, that, that we would shift that out. And if we wanted to shift it out into the horizon years or have some funding in the five-year plan so that it has been identified. And again, when, when we talk about the 2020 and the five-year plan, then we're certainly going to be more informed about some of those things. And so at least we've, we've recognized that, that there is potentially a need out there and not necessarily deleted it just so that, you know, so we don't get sticker shock when all of a sudden it, it comes back and that, that there is some, there's some effort put towards this type of park and in this location. So what I'm hearing is that that might be a comfort level of the council is that we do shift it out in the final version of the capital improvement plan. That's something that we can notate and then final document that would be, feel a little bit better, at least it's, it's still in there, but knowing that we do have the PROST effort to go through and inform capital budget.
Well, you heard that comfort level from Bill and Paul. But are there, so let's look document-wide rather than focus on just parks. Are there a lot, other projects that were not, were imported from other places than the CFP? So is Parks the only place that we might be projects that went on the prior CFP?
That, that's a potential, because that was one of the things that we're work in progress, trying to connect the 2014-19 CFP. We, our effort through the 2017 budget was that we identified what on that one year, you know, the 2017 budget was on that 14-19 plan. And now we need to take that further and then identify what's in the proposed 18 through 22. So those are all kind of separate pieces that we have to kind of go through manually to connect the dots. And so we're still working on that as part of, before the council would be considering adoption of the plan, to make sure that you have that information. And so that's a work in progress. And that was in some of the comments down below in the document process of the Q and A, that it was identified there were questions about what's changed. You know, how do, how do I know what was in one plan versus the next? And so that's why we wanted you to know that we are, we are still working on getting you that information so that you can connect the dots.
Is that information available before scheduled adoption of this?
We're, well, we're working at, you know, from a, from a meeting standpoint, we, we hope to have that before so that we'd certainly want to provide that in supplemental information to the council prior to your final consideration. That would be the public hearing in.
In July.
Considering, yeah, July 17. That is our goal, to get that information out there for review and that we could perhaps add that to another work session if we needed another meeting in order to specifically have that dialogue about exactly that, what was in past plans, current budget, and that fills that question. And if that is.
Other comments and questions?
About what? I have one, I'm, there's one line item, it's a lower level detail one. I'm just, are you talking about the whole topic or just?
Whole topic.
Want to talk about one particular project? It's embedded within the Confluence Park one. About seven years ago, there was a mountain bike task force, among other things, that identified the construction of a skills park in the Highlands. And we even, we even did collect some funds from King County to help do that. I see that that's part of the construction, it's part of the Central Park Improvement of PK 008. And it's just, it's out in future years. It's not in the first five years. And, you know, I, I'd like to see that pull forward, if at all possible. Because it is, it got backburnered. There was a lot of, there was a lot of investment from many community members when we pulled that task force together. And I think it got delayed because the, it was, there was potentially a land swap in King County taking and maybe with the related, some of the adjacent land. And then that never happened. And so as a result, that particular project has just been in limbo ever since. And I think now we have resolution about any type of land swap with King County, that that's not going forward. So I'd like us to get, I think we should decide on this project. And I don't know any reason, I'd like to have a conversation. And probably few of you were part of it back then or remember, it's been a while ago. Can we move it forward? When we bring it into the next five years?
One of the things we can do tonight is collect additional questions. And so that would be a question.
So I guess I kind of want to restate some of the things because we kind of went around in circles a little bit. And I got something in my mind, but I bet you it's different than everybody else. And so back in what's showing in here. So, you know, I said about not having money in 18 or 19 for anything. We just don't know what we're doing about it. Have some agreement with that, I think. Then we have another level of stuff that's really, you know, almost figments of our imagination yet, like, like, you know, Significant Park. It's just a figment, you know, we don't know at all what it is. And, and I think maybe the solution to that is, I don't want to throw it out because you don't want to lose things, but showing no funding at all in here except in outer years. Like I think you suggested there, Jen, it's just past the five-year point. So we, we see there's something out there, it's really big, it's looming, maybe. And it may just fall away, we don't know. But to turn our blind eye to it totally may not be the best way. So big ones that may be, but we really don't have a handle on. You know, I see them okay out in future years. Ones that we have a little idea on, but really very little, don't show anything in 18 or 19. And, and then I would like, as you made that push there, if we have the Splash Park in here, I would like to get a line of Dog Park at this point in time as well. You know, because I think we have enough pressure that we could list that specifically that way. And we don't have a lot of information on that yet, but we know there's as much pressure as there is on some of these other projects. And I think it's worth having a line for that. Where we put money, we don't know, but I think it's worth stating it. That helps. Is that a good restatement of some of that stuff?
Do you have, Jen, did you have other information for us tonight?
Through the Q and A, what I wanted to do is go through a brief kind of, kind of funding review and just to have a dialogue about the funding. Some of it came from Saturday, so it would be kind of revisiting that, but just to make sure that, that you're comfortable with the information. Are you seeing it in the way that you need in order to analyze that? So I'm going to go through some slides here. Let's see, so these, these again are the, are objectives and outcomes for the adoption of a capital improvement plan. So I wanted to keep those out there in front of everyone. These are capital plan objectives according to budget policy. And so this screen shows that snapshot by the category description. And you can see that we've got, and this is just the five-year plan. So these were the total proposed uses. So these are, these are the estimated project costs here. We've got $188 million in five-year projects that have been proposed. On the sources side, I just wanted to make sure that this, this was a table, a way for you to, you know, take a look at all of the different funding sources. And you can see that we've, we certainly have sources and projects that are, and most, a lot of them are in parts. So there, there aren't a lot of projects that have only one source. So when we look at, at sources this way, we just want to make sure, make sure that it's known that we're using, and the cash flow analysis helps to, for some of these, these sources to analyze whether or not the projects that are proposed in this order in that particular year and at that certain, at that level. So we've certainly got projects that are funded by REIT and mitigation dollars. And I'll go through those cash flows with you in just a little bit. We've got the utility type projects, and so we've got cash flow for that. We've got some specific funds, like the Fleet Fund and the IT Fund, where you see a fund where it says is the funding source. That typically means is that that fund is a special, or an internal service fund, and so it's funded from all the other operating funds. And so that's where those sources come from, but we just use one fund or the, or the master fund. And then, of course, we've got the funds, the funding sources coming from bond proceeds, and that is at $81 million in this five-year proposed plan that would need some sort of debt financing. We've got some cash on hand in the general fund that projects have been identified as, as the source. And then we've got certainly in the street operating fund, there was one project in 2021, about $500,000 had been identified as, as the source. So this is a snapshot of the sources. The unfunded portion of the CIP is again, in that five-year period, is the $81 million, primarily for proposed parks projects of $35 million and transportation projects of approximately $46 million. This then, let me see if I can blow this up. I know that it's very small, but this, this is a, this is the information where we, where we took a look at the council retreat. And the, the projects that are, that are identified as being, a portion of it is unfunded, are these $81 million in projects. And I'm just going to kind of come over here to the variance or the unfunded portion. You can see that the total project is perhaps larger than the unfunded amount. So that's why we have a lot of sources coming into some of these proposed projects. But the, the examples that were given from a debt service analysis to, just to kind of go back over how this example is laid out, because this is in, by no means any council direction for this, but this essentially was to say that, let's say that we wanted to do stuff. And in 2018, you can see that light, that light tan, those, those dollars in each of the five years, about $20.8 million. Let's just say that that is, was the, the direction moving forward. So let's do some stuff and let's issue some debt in 2018. And again, bonds are issued the year, you know, before the project is going to happen. And so then we, we have those proceeds, they go into a special fund, we do the project, and then we pay the debt service, that principal and interest. So that comes, and we show it just for simplicity's sake, is that we show the debt then, estimated debt payment being in the next year. So we would essentially start paying on the loan. And so the estimated debt for about a 20- And so the estimated debt for about a $20.8 million at today's bond pricing, where we're, where we're seeing, and all of these are run at 20-year amortization schedules, we'd have about $1.2 million in debt to start paying on that $20 million for the next 20 years. And so if that, what's the source of, of that? And that is identified as, as potentially as a general fund. So let's, let's say that that bond was issued in 2018, council manic, so that would have been non-voted debt, but that is a requirement that the general fund needs to support that and transfer out the money to that debt service fund. So that's the, that's the way that we showed, if all of these projects in the five-year CIP, we were going to, we were going to do them, and we were going to do them in, in different phases, and that's essentially the debt that we would show in the operating budget as new transfer out. And so that would, that transfer out would then compete with all of the other things that the general fund pays for. Going forward in the example of about $30 million in 2019, oh yes, Paul.
So let's break that down a little bit more, the, in the 2018 bond issuance of $20,850,000 that you show there. So that amount of 20 million is the, is, obviously it's not, you know, that amount isn't needed in 2018 or 19.
Correct, correct.
So, so why would you, why would you issue a bond for, or an amount that we're not going to need for a couple of years?
Well, a couple of things, it's just, it's, part of it's to illustrate how, how, how bonds are, you know, how they're planned, how they're issued, and how they're repaid, but the reason that I, that I kind of selected some projects is that, for example, the, the, this, this top project, and then we have, this one is the Creeksides and Sensitive Land, Central Isikoa, and then, so we see that, that in 2019, it, it had, you know, $9 million of unfunded, so it would be, it would be typical that we would issue that debt before. So that, and that's a big lion's share of the $20 million, is that, and so the other reason why I picked all of the, all of the $500,000 in each of those for the sensitive land purchases, is that, you know, we'd, we'd have the money essentially in the bank, specifically for making those sensitive land purchases. So that, that's kind of, that's kind of why I showed the example that way, is that we'd, we'd have that money because of the type of projects that these are, is that most of that, in those early years in that project, is acquisition, and so we'd, we'd have the, the funds on hand. The, the reason why I picked a couple of, of the transportation projects was to show that, you know, because we've got the proposed front street scape and central park traffic signal, that's about 2.8, almost $3 million in, in a project that we could essentially issue debt for. Again, we'd have, you know, we'd have that money ready to go to actually do those projects in 2019. Now, the reason that I selected Providence Point Intersection was as part of that, yet we could certainly take that off, and we would shift the, that $5.7 million into 2019. You know, some of the challenge is that the size of the bond issue is, is getting big, so it's just a matter of, I mean, we can play, I mean, we can play around with funding, and what projects to fund, and pre-fund, and do that, and, I mean, we can do a, a lot of that, but it's, it's just to give you an idea of what might you want to have us include in the, you know, the final budget adoption, because if we are going to include doing a bond issue, we, we would want to reflect that in, in the budget documents, because, so that we'd have sources coming in, and that, that payment going out from the general fund. I mean, that, that's solely the purpose for setting it, showing an example of this nature.
Okay, so thank you, I understand what you've done in the model, and, and since you pointed out the Providence Point one itself, at that amount, I mean, we'd be carrying that debt for a couple of years without using it there, so there, we'd be paying interest on something that's just sitting, you know, in an account, not being put to use, so getting, helping us get an idea of what that costs are, and I realize, and so I, my interpretation of what I heard you just say was, there's a little bit of an art involved. We know if we're committed to certain activities, there may be a business justification to, to acquire as much of the funds, as you just said, maybe through a council manic bond or what have you, at this point in time, even though some of it's not going to be expended for future years, and here's the business justification for doing it that way. And, and there's probably additional costs involved or what have you, and maybe uncertainty in the market, but under, you know, making the business case for that, I think would, would be the next step in something like this, as you, you know, this is a model, and I know that if we got to that, you would probably provide that, but that would be if you're going to say, let's collect, let's, let's borrow money now for future years, let's see the justification, instead of just, no, let's borrow less, and then let's do it in the, closer to the time it's going to be used.
And, and one of the things, just to add to that, thank you, Paul, is that the, when we're, when we're going out for a bond, we want to make it attractive to those bidders, and oftentimes a smaller issue isn't as attractive as a, a larger bond issuance, it's just kind of the nature of the beast, and so we always want to, if we have an opportunity just to do that for business purposes, we, we just, we want to show that, and you kind of, you've hit the nail right on the head with why I showed it that way. So, this essentially is, I just wanted to, to find out if there was any, if this was a good way, if this was a, a good piece of information for you to see how the funding work, especially on the actual debt portion of it? Too big. All right, let me get over here. Okay, the next, the next table is, and in the proposed capital budgets, in, it's in the front section, in the executive summary or the introductory section, one of the things that's new to the capital budget discussion is, is cash flow analysis, and so what we wanted to show is that, I'll just give you a brief walkthrough of how this, how this is laid out. Because this is 2018, we're estimating what the, the beginning balances are for our REIT dollars, total REIT dollars coming in. Then what we do is we, is we do just a quick forecast of 2000, or the revenues that would be coming in each year, in this line item where you see 2008 CIP, 2019 CIP, these are the projects that had identified REIT as a partial funding source for the project, and so we wanted to basically show what we anticipate coming in, in the year, and then what would be going out through doing a capital project. And so at the end of the day, at the end of the five-year, what we wanted to show is, what's the balance? You know, can we do these projects that have been identified? And in this case, from a REIT, REIT I perspective, because there's, there's two categories of REIT that we receive, is that this, these, these projects that had been identified using REIT I would be, would be doable. We've got a, a positive balance. On REIT II, and this is out five years, is that, no, not all of these projects are doable, so either we would have to then talk about which projects are impacting the, the five-year cash flow analysis, and so that's essentially information for you, is to understand is that, over the five-year plan, we've, we've still got work to do, and to identify other funding sources, or as we develop capital budgets over the years, then this obviously changes, but we wanted to provide cash flow analysis about, can we do these things? Do we have the money after this, the five-year plan? So this is a REIT, I, we've also provided mitigation cash flow analysis, and, and these are in the large, the large buckets with regards to mitigation dollars. I know that there was a question about, where is the bike ped? And so the answer to that is that projects identified in this five-year period, we've got one in 2022 that had been identified to, to use some bike ped impact fees, and so the rest of that, because we did specifically separate those funding sources from the traffic versus the bike ped, are out in the horizon or the future years. But again, this is laid out the same way, with estimated beginning balances as a Jan I, 2018, and those projects that were identified in that year, and the type of, of mitigation dollars to be used, and essentially then ending balances at the end of the planning tool. So that is mitigation, Paul?
So, just a comment, the, this table that you're showing right here, so I understand, at least online from the PDF version of the, tonight's packet, there was a, a new version today, so I downloaded it, and I had found a little discrepancy in the numbers earlier. You showed a table earlier in this presentation, two slides ago, that doesn't, it's different than what's in the packet, and I see these numbers, or this table is slightly different than what's in the packet as well. So, so if that's, it's just more of a, more, I guess it's a housekeeping, housekeeping item, that as we go forward and update the package as it's moving forward, I want to just make sure we get these updated tables in here.
Again, our, our opportunity for improving our, our capital improvement plan tools is a, a project that you see in the plan, and that's some budget software to, again, take this offline separately, and that's our, our goal, is that our, the final document, you know, the, the dollars flow, so if we say mitigation dollars, that you, that you see that in the cash flow, ending balances, so that we've, we've connected, because one of the things that we have to do just to get a little bit into the weeds for you, is that we have to go through each project detail sheet and link it over to a master funding sheet, and so there is definitely some human error, but we, we know that these are things that we're, we're constantly chasing for that end document. Let's see, additionally then, this again, the next three tables, and they're also will be in the, the final document, will be the cash flow projections for the water, wastewater and stormwater funds. These, these are essentially total funds, and so these cash flows are, they show a little bit differently from the others, because what we want to show is that, that's that estimated ending fund balance, because this is a whole fund that handles operating, it handles capital, it handles debt, it handles transfers, and so it's very important that you see the, the big picture about these funds, and the impact of the capital investments that are proposed to be made.
Jen, on that one, was the 5, 5 and 10,000, is that the investments in a water treatment plant?
For that particular project, it's, it's part of it, it had been identified as the potential for issuing water revenue bonds for the treatment plant, but it is not solely for that particular project.
In the current water system plan we have now, not the update we're working on, we didn't identify a plant at that point in time in the last version, so I know we likely need one, but what is the trigger to actually get it in there if it's not currently listed in the water system plan?
Well, that, that essentially then, it's, that is, that plan is being updated, and so that, that's similar to the post issue with not having, you know, we know that we're working on the master plan, so that would essentially inform, and so.
We had a talk earlier about all the different, yeah, all the different ways that things end up in the CIP, and so, fact that it's been talked about, even though it hasn't been formally acted on, I think is what got it in there.
Yes, that's correct. All right, so we're stormwater cash flow, so though, that essentially is some updates to the, the funding information, and as part of the, the Q and A, certainly know that we have some still work in progress items to provide to the council, but I would, at this point, be happy to answer any other questions, if there are other projects in other categories that the, that there are questions about or discussions for, be happy to answer any of those questions.
Sure, thank you. We've had a number of comments tonight about the project side, and we, we just once again talked about, okay, how do they get into this list and how not, and, and I just want to point out that there was, there is an extremely large item on the revenue side that we haven't had conversation about, and, and actually potential many of them, especially, and so when you showed the, kind of the, the bond, the debt funding table that we first saw in your presentation this weekend, you had it in this slide as well, you, there's listed in there a transportation benefit district, and then another potential source as well is a new park levy as well, and so it's the same kind of thing, right? There really hasn't been much of a conversation about a TBD at all, and it's actually a very big number. And so, and so at some point, we got, so, I mean, and without it, you wouldn't, we would have a lot larger unfunded portion of this, and it may, and it probably would look different, you probably wouldn't have stacked so much in here as perhaps unfunded, but I just wanted to point that out. We've been having conversations about what got in there expenditure-wise, well, we also need to have conversations about what's going to get there revenue-wise, of course, I mean, that's obvious.
Are there any other questions for Jen about the proposed plan?
And down to project specific, I guess, a couple of things I want to mention. One of which I guess is the front street land, streetscape. According to the way I read it, things won't really happen on Front Street till 2020, there's some, looks like some planning money in 19 and real construction in 20. I think that's something that's not really where we should be with that project, we've got, we've, we've accepted plan at this point, and, and we promised some things to happen, and I think that should be moved up to start working on that more, sooner than actually getting something three years after, we told people that something's going to happen right after we do the street. That's not an acceptable timeline for me, so I want to see what we can do about moving that one up. And one other project I don't see listed, just to mention, and Emily will laugh, but the environmental and sustainability strategic plan that we're just working on right now, it's not approved yet, but in there we're talking about 15% of our energy coming from solar, so if 15% of our energy for the city is going to come from solar, somehow we have to install solar. So I think we'd have, need to have an item in here of expenditure for, because it says we're going to do that in the next three to four years, I believe, something, you know, it's not, again, not approved, but it's fairly quickly, so I think we need to have an item in here about, you know, capital investment in solar energy, if that's what we're going to have, and that hasn't been really, hasn't been discussed, but it's, it's written in the plan, it's not approved, right? So, I think I ought to get thrown in here. Yeah, sure, so those are two.
Sure, I think we have anticipated that we would incorporate that into future capital projects, we just need to identify which projects. I think once council adopts that as a policy direction, then we can go and take a look at which capital projects are good candidates for that application, and that would be no different than what we're talking about, anytime we do a, adopt a new master plan or a new policy initiative, then to, then after that, go and take a look and see how we can incorporate those new projects.
Right, and that's where we're in that kind of limbo, like with parks, and I think that's a big enough one that I'd like to have it highlighted, I guess, as well, because there's some, there's some front-end loading on that to, to get a lot of payback in the, in the future years, and, and if it's going to be part of various projects, it's still going to add funding to a lot of those projects, that's my thought.
Other questions? So, I heard a few extra questions, and including work that you're still doing to identify items in this proposed CIP that were not in the prior CFP, and I guess the, one of the questions for council members is, do we want to try to have one more meeting on this before it comes back to the council on, I think it's July 17th? Or do we want to get information prior to that meeting, then vote on the CIP with the potential to make several adjustments that night? Because if we meet one more time, we could do sort of the budget thumbs up, thumbs down, might make it a cleaner night, council, in a regular council meeting.
And I think there's a number of changes that we talked about that are actually, you know, fairly projects. know, fairly project specific, and quite a few things in there, particularly with moving funding from year to year and so forth, would make this look quite a bit different, and it would really change your tables in there, I think, because a lot of those would move funding out quite a few years. So I think there's, you know, when you start messing around with cells like that, it really makes some total dollar changes. So I think it's worth getting those things where we can see them again a little better.
My sense is it's somewhat time sensitive, and so I think the challenge would be to ensure that we all don't come together again at another work session in the next few weeks and have the same sort of just evolving conversations. It would have to be a limited scope of discussion, and if there were additional items that council members wanted to thumbs up, thumbs down on additional questions that we wanted to answer for revising the CIP before it comes before the council at a regular meeting, that would have, there would have to be sort of a deadline for bringing those forward, so that we have a fairly efficient conversation. And if you wanted to meet again, I don't have, I don't have a problem doing that. I think we'd want to have a fairly limited conversation that was limited in scope, sort of limited to what we talked about tonight, or potentially any new items that were hopefully brought up ahead of time, so council members could think about it. Comments on that, thoughts about that?
Separate meeting, side of council.
Not, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, I think that would be appropriate too, to have, because it would just give us a clean project, I mean, a clean sheet to be looking at, understanding exactly what it is we're going.
Okay.
And so you're not considering the July 10th?
Is there another, are we listed for another work session already?
There is a work session on July 10th.
So I don't know if it's, I don't think it's on that agenda. I think from tonight, it was going to July 17, the regular meeting, and then we would talk at leadership about which work session to bring it to, and if the next one is July 10th, then it would be July 10th. I just don't have that listed in front of me. Maybe you do.
No, I, I don't, I don't. I just know that that's the next work session.
So Tola, what do you think? Or, maybe you don't.
I'm sorry, I don't see why we don't do it July 10th. Tell me again, if we've tentatively got a work session set up for July 10th.
Yeah, the question is whether we want to meet one more time, because we have a number of questions outstanding, and bring it to a regular council meeting on the 17th. Would you want to meet, meet one more time, and the, the possible work session to bring that to would be July 10th, and we kind of squeeze it in and have a limited scope conversation about the questions we had tonight, the outstanding questions.
I'm still confused. It would be before July 10th, or it would be on July 10th?
Possibly on July 10th.
Yeah, I think meeting July 10th is, is what I would prefer.
No, I wasn't going to call a special meeting. I don't know how many, I don't know how many options there are between now and July 17. Then Paul just popped up with July 10th, so I don't know if there are other work sessions between now and then, but it wouldn't be a special meeting. Okay?
Yep.
Everybody okay with that? All right.
Oh, wait, wait. Sorry, I just realized I'm in Alaska on July 10th.
That's perfect for you then.
Well, so, I, I mean, I like the idea of having a turn in this conversation before July 17th, but maybe I can talk to you later about schedule stuff.
Okay, and, and what's today, Monday? Wednesday morning, we'll know, when we look at the planning calendar, we'll know what options we have. Don't have it with me right now.
I'm also going to be not here on July 10th. That's why I was aware of that date as well. And so, however, you know, I would just continue, I, I think we should plan on calling the question in regular business on July 17th. That should just be the plan, and we, and we work toward that. I think getting some of the information back from the questions that were asked today and kind of the adjustments, that earlier we can get that, then an opportunity to review that in advance, you know, and use the existing non-meeting mechanisms we have for sharing information, then we, you know, we'd work that in prior to the 10th if I wasn't going to be here.
Okay, so we'll look on Wednesday and see what the options are, and, and geared out, and we need to solicit more information or availability, we will. Okay. Thanks. Next, oh, it's Jen. Oh, yeah, did we need a five minute break or not? Okay, five minute break.
Okay, we're back in session. Next on the agenda, financial management policy. Jen?
Thank you. It's kind of my night tonight. So, I appreciate.
We have an introduction of the proposed changes to financial management policy tonight.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, the proposed financial management policy has been provided through the Agenda Bill and referred to committee. And so, there are, because the format from the current capital policy, or excuse me, I gotta shift to big picture. Financial policy, which includes capital budget policy, there is a section. So, we've already gone through that section of the plan. So, we can say we're done with one section. Now, this is all of the sections. And so, there are a lot, there are the red font, the format that's used to say, well, language in the entire policy can be discussed, but these are the things that we certainly want to have focused on targets and benchmarks and thresholds and things of that nature. And so, that, the proposed policy is a lot. And so, it has been expanded certainly. What I wanted to do tonight is talk about one of the sections on reserves, specifically to add some more background to that reserve section, because it is often the section of financial policy that gets a lot of the discussion. It's part of the budget discussions. It's part of can we do capital projects. So, what I wanted to do was to talk a little bit more about the reserve section. I wanted to talk about the risk assessment. So, it's a worksheet that the GFOA Government Finance Officers Association had come up with as a way to identify what's your unique community risk level. And it can be completed by a variety of, it can be completed by elected officials. It can be completed by administration, department directors. And so, all of that information is a way to combine individual perspectives and put it, and you know, put some numbers to it to quantify what is our risk level. And then, there are some of those ranges that have been identified as being we're a high-risk community or we're a low-risk community. And so, that's essentially next steps. And so, if you would like to complete that electronically and submit that back to me, that would be helpful, because then that will be combined. And in summary form, we'll be able to then have the next conversation about, well, here's everyone's responses.
Sure.
And this is the level that we're at. And so, it might be as easy as, is the council comfortable with that target level being plugged into the financial policy?
Right.
And so, that's primarily for the general fund. The reserve policy proposed identifies levels of reserves for different types of funds.
Yeah, so let's talk about the, you want to talk about the reserves?
Correct.
And then, you want to talk about the form for people, different folks to fill out?
Yes.
And then, we'll talk about next steps and also give an opportunity for council members to ask any questions of any other parts of the proposed changes that are here.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, tonight might be a little bit shorter than some of the future work sessions.
Because we need some long meetings.
We definitely need some long work sessions on financial policy, because that's, you know, your eyes haven't glossed over enough.
Stacy was joking.
I am joking. Yeah, I was just flicking, I was just gonna go to it.
303 of 333.
Reserves is on the first page.
Some of it. From your, in the packet posted, it is. In the proposed policy, it starts on page two of 22 of the proposed. So, it's right after overall policy objectives, introduction and objectives. And so, reserves is proposed section 2.0, reserves and fund balance.
But the changes are in red.
No.
The proposed changes are in red?
Those are the targets and thresholds that we specifically want to define.
Okay.
And so, part of the reserve policy, if we want to, we talk about current policy versus proposed.
Can I ask you just a clarifying question? There's a lot of changes in here. The red is just the pieces you want council input on. So, it's not track changes type, red is what you change.
You tell us.
Yeah, that's a question.
Correct. If I were to track change from the current policy to the proposed policy, it would be zingers. I mean, the whole document.
So, then what's the red? The policy questions?
The red are specifically those targets that ought to be set by the council in policy.
Okay.
So, if we focus on those, that would be key.
Okay.
But certainly, I just wanted to be known that if there are other language pieces in the policy that you have questions on, those are certainly up for having, whether they're wordsmith, whether they're completely changed, taken out. And certainly, there, you know, there could be some proposed administrative changes, because when, oftentimes, when we look at things, we say, ah, maybe that might be better just to strike a section or whatnot.
Okay. Let's get started.
So, in the reserves, what I wanted to just kind of high-level talk about is that we wanted to, we want to place in there fund balance designations. And so, fund balance has different designations. And those are listed in the proposed policy. That is something new. It is a governmental accounting standards board definitions. And so, policy, we want to refer to some of those things that are guiding us, are telling us what we have to have in policy. Also, reserve sections being so important, that one of the things that needs to be identified in reserve policy is those targets of those levels of reserve for different types of funds. And then, also, the reason that there's new sections in this policy about what do we do if we go below the target? So, what does a council have to do and when do you have to do it? And then, also, if you have more than your target, when are you going to spend it? How, you know, are you going to spend it only a one time or are you going to spend it on, and is there other criteria that you would establish in policy? And so, that's important, that this guidance then provides for how we redirect other resources to replenish. And then, what do we do when we want to spend some of that? So, I'm often asked about the, what's the best practices? What's the level that we have to have? The real answer is that it depends. It's based on the community's unique situation. And that's why we're going to talk about that risk assessment worksheet, because we may perceive our risk differently than just with the kind of rule of thumb, is a couple months of expenditures. Well, that's, you know, that could be a guideline that you'd want to use. That's not something that necessarily would be recommended, is to just say, well, let's just have a couple months of operating. But that essentially is the guide, is a couple months of operating expenditure.
Jen, can I ask you a couple questions? So, what we're talking about now is the size of a healthy ending fund balance. So, you don't plan to spend all of your money. You plan to have some left over at the end. We used to have what number in there?
The current policy is, the minimum is eight percent. That's the floor. And the maximum is 15 percent.
Okay. And so, now, what we're talking about is something that goes a little higher than what we currently have in our policy.
It could be.
It could be.
Yes.
And also, compare this for me to Eastside Fire and Rescue. They just redid theirs and their, I don't care, remember if, if you're familiar with that off the top of your hand, but they went from some general thing, like you just said. I think it was a month of operating expenses to more than that. So, are we kind of in line with where they were when they made their change or?
I'm not necessarily sure if we could compare that. But it is, you know, from a governmental, you know, fund balance reserve policy, it's just, it's rule of thumb from a, trying to think, drawn, not the governmental accounting standards board, but the National Association of Accounting, that is where the rule of thumb comes from.
The two months.
When we talk about best practices, then we get into the GFOA and GASB. And that's where we get to these target levels or these ranges. And it's based on then risk factors. And so, that's why we're looking at it differently about what level we set.
So, what could go wrong with us changing to a higher level from what we're at now?
Well, what could go wrong or what could go right would be that we would have enough in reserves for some of the things that we identify as risks. So, things like catastrophic events. So, we'd have to cash flow before we got FEMA dollars. We, if we have volatile or elastic revenue sources, like sales tax. So, if we have another great recession, we would see a decline in revenue sources. And so, in order to get ramped up and, you know, to do some cutting in order to accommodate for that, you'd have some short-term, some of those, what I'll call financial chill versus, you know, an outright, you know, great recession. So, those are reasons why increasing your reserves based on your risk level, why you would do that. So, if that answers that question.
Can you point out in the proposed reserve policy, some of the more important things that you think we should be keeping in mind when we further consider this? Because we're going to consider it more than just tonight.
Well, specifically in the policy, the section on the reserve target, 2.2 reserve target, level target for the general fund, that essentially, in the policy states that the city will endeavor to have a healthy unassigned fund balance to provide for cash flow. That is, and it's primarily for those to pay for expenditures when they come due, because we don't always have, you know, we get revenue in, so tax revenues come in, you know, in kind of large sums, you know, so it's not a steady monthly revenues that come in. And so, that's why you, that's part of why you have reserves, is so that you can cash flow your expenditures until you get your taxes. Certainly, the, it's similar in the current policy about natural disasters, loss of state revenues, so a reason for that. And then, essentially, it's similar to our current policy for that the fund balance should be approximately X, you know, or a range. Currently, it's eight to 15. This policy proposes 15 to 20. However, I think it's important that we go through that exercise to finding out exactly what our risk level is combined.
I think it's also important to note, because I think it was kind of embedded in what you're talking about, specifically 2.3 conditions for using reserves. You've read, highlighted the, I mean, that, so I think the council should pay attention to, council members should pay attention to, are these the right bullets?
That is correct.
So, one of the bullets there in terms of resources to meet emergency expenditures, it's probably important for the council to understand, Jen, your work that she here with Eastside Fire and Rescue Board in talking them into not setting up a separate reserve because of the reserve policies that cities already have in place. And so, not duplicating and creating a bank over here and a bank over here when it's the same.
Do you mean contingency fund?
Sorry?
Do you mean contingency fund?
Reserve, no, different. So, what it was, was there was a proposal on the table that to, in order for Eastside Fire and Rescue to have access to cash during an emergencies, they would establish their own reserve system on top of reserve systems that already existed. And Jen talked them into considering a more balanced approach where the city creates the reserve and makes it accessible to emergency service providers during an emergency, instead of creating two buckets of money. And so, there may be some good rationale here in order for risk assessment, for us to decide that it's better for us to go to the 15 to 20, because we are now the bank for, one of the banks for EFER, if that makes sense.
That's one of the reasons why you might consider that higher level of reserves, is because you have that commitment at some point, but you don't want to put a dollar amount on it.
Right.
And one of the practices that you can endeavor, and this is in the proposed policy, is that you, and some communities set aside specifically in a contingency fund. So, you actually move those dollars out of the general fund and you put them in a contingency fund. Some communities don't have a contingency fund. They just have a healthy reserve.
Right.
Because it's, you can do either.
Many different things.
And you can do both.
Which, why you have the contingency fund now is noted as you may establish a contingency fund.
Yes, yes. And that's that kind of wordsmithing, you know, oftentimes, you get into may, shall, will, must. And that's why it is proposed to be may.
Otherwise, you end up with way too much set aside.
Yes. Exactly. So, the target is important, is to establish that in the final policy. And then, how the reserves might be used for, so the typical ones are listed.
Okay.
So, there's nothing earth-shattering here, because we all know that we have economic downturns. We have natural disasters. We want to make sure that we can cash flow and then also that we provide resources potentially for one-time capital expenditures and then connect the capital plan to the use, the potential use of reserves, you know, based on council decisions. Also, in the proposed reserve policy, I wanted to point out, this is 2.4 in the reserve targets for enterprise funds. In 2.4, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, you can see that there are some financial indicators specifically for utility funds. One of the things that I wanted to point out is that, one, that it connects the CIP again. So, that's something important in policy, is connect policies to policies and plans. The debt coverage ratio is at 1.5. That is a typical kind of standard. If the council wanted something more, I would tell you that it's typical standard industry. But it is a target that we want to set. The other change from current practice for operating reserves is that, to make it consistent across the board, we've got some of our utilities where we've got 60 days of operating versus 90 days. And so, my recommendation is that they're all 90 days, because then it's easier to track that, where you can set up these indicator components and then you can quickly do an analysis of those utility funds to say that they're meeting all the financial indicators. And so, for you to get information about the health of your utility funds, you can quickly say, we meet this indicator, we meet this indicator, we meet, so it's that metrics and that's that reporting on how well we're doing there. So, that's why 90 days is proposed there.
But those utilities are very not volatile, right?
That's correct.
Aren't they? I mean, they have a very long time constant for changes. So, it seems like it wouldn't be as critical to have as large of a reserve on those as we have, for instance, on our general fund, which the revenues and expenses are more volatile.
That's correct. Yes, absolutely correct.
So, 90 days on those is three months, right? But that isn't, that's more than we have proposed as general fund margin, right? Where we've got more like two months.
Well, the two months for the general fund, and that's where we'll, when we do more of an assessment, because that's where you're going to review the volatility of the revenue sources that come in for the general fund. And so, that's why I think that it'll be surprising what we see come out of that. So, at this point, you know, we don't know what our level in the general fund is going to be. So, certainly, and then I'll go back to utility funds, is that if we have a higher level in operating reserves, it does take away from the portion of the utility ending fund balance contributed toward capital. And so, what you'll start to see in the utility funds, when you look at your fund balances, you'll see the portion attributable to that's unassigned, used for anything. Assigned, and that would be for operating reserves. And then, you have committed, which would be for capital. And then, you have restricted, that's debt. So, you take off the top of any fund balance for utility funds, and you know, so you see that dollar amount? There is a portion of that that is just not usable, because you have to set it aside for your debt.
I have a follow-up question on tolls. So, this may be too simplified, but the two months that we have in the general fund keeps the ship running. If all of our revenues disappeared that go into the general fund that run the business, is this in the event of a natural disaster where nobody could be paying bills, our utility systems would function for three months? Is that what it's doing here?
Well, that's essentially what we would be able to, if the operating reserve is set at 90 days, then yes, we would have three months that we would have committed in the fund balance, right? That we'd be able to operate essentially for 90 days.
So, does that make more sense, that you would need more months in the event of a natural disaster or something, some disruption, that at least those basic services of water supply and sewer supply continue for 90 days? Because that's sort of where my head went with it. I didn't have a hard time with it being more than two months.
But if you had an, if you had an extreme natural disaster, you'd have FEMA funds long before 90 days are up, wouldn't you?
Not necessarily. You, it takes a long time for FEMA dollars to come. And so, that's why you, I mean, you have to cash flow everything until you get those dollars. And it is a huge undertaking, you know, to start those FEMA dollars flowing.
Yeah, six months to a year. We're interested in this.
Well, then, 90 days is totally insufficient.
Might be.
Why shouldn't it be?
It might be.
I mean, it should be whatever it should be, right? Given that we sit on top of both the deep subduction fault and the surface fault, it should be whatever the right number is. 90 days seems arbitrary.
Well, and so, I think what Jen has also said is this is the draft proposal and that the risk assessment information will come in, along with comments.
Yeah.
And I think she's hearing, you're hearing a question?
I am.
And so, maybe some further information on that.
Very similar to our discussion at EFER as well about FEMA funds and how they come.
I have a question around section 2.3, conditions for using reserves. Is now the right time to discuss that or is that also after we talked about?
Now's the time.
Okay. Those first two seem different than the last two to me. Red resources to make up for temporary decreased revenues such as state shared resources, revenues. Yeah, the state has a tendency to take those away forever. They don't tend to be, they don't tend to take them away for a little while. They tend to take them away forever. Provide temporary resources in the event of economic downturn while expenditure reductions are implemented. That's also, you know, that seems to be exactly contrary to what we said, which was we wouldn't, we didn't want to use ending fund balance towards systemic problems. And I would call economic downturn is a systemic problem, right? Because as we saw with the Great Recession, it can last a really long time. I mean, the Great Recession sort of broke a lot of the models, right? Because it was previously something like this I'd be more comfortable with, because it's like, yeah, you know, six, 12-month recession and then you pop out of it. But man, that wasn't this last one. So, those first two really do seem different. The last two seem much more in line with historically how we think about using ending fund balance.
I would agree. One thing to note on the reserves about the temporary decrease is just, essentially, reserves ought to be looked at as used in order to make those systemic changes. So, if you know that you're never going to get that shared revenue back, then there's that time involved in order for you to make that transition to that. And so, that's essentially what the policy is proposing, is that yes, you would have to use some reserves in order, you know, because to change from one day to the next because of some action, you've got that transition time. And so, that's essentially what this policy would do, is to say, it's okay. You've got to, I mean, you've got to have some flexibility in order to make those long-term permanent changes.
That makes sense too, but that's not what it says.
But now that you explain it, the second one sounds a little bit that way, but the first one doesn't. The second one does end with while expenditure reductions are implemented, right? So, I now, I get what you're saying there. But the first one really, this, my confidence in state's ability to return revenues to us once they take them away is unfortunately low.
So, a good example would be like what's proposed with LFTW, so that if that got implemented as part of the budget for this year, like come, and they may not adopt it till June 30. Come July 1st, we may be on the hook for the state's previous share of LFTW, which over a one-year basis, like 123,000. So, we'd have to come up with 60 right away. It's not a lot of money, but I'm just, it's an easy example to pull from. So, we'd have to cut the budget somewhere to find $60,000 or we could just assume that gets us to January, we could tap into reserves for the balance of the year and then come January, we can accommodate that into the overall budget. Otherwise, we'd have to come back and say, either have to cut the budget or we have to identify some other savings that we got to balance that. I think that was one of the things you were trying to identify, cover. That's just an easy example.
And your example, is it temporary?
Well, I mean, it could be. In this case, it would be permanent, but there's been a few examples, like the liquor reserve funds, where they made adjustments and then ended up bringing those revenues back.
Sounds like we're missing a couple things. One is the monies to bridge a gap between, it's no, it's not really a temporary, it's not a temporary adjustment that needs to be made. It's to bridge a gap for more than one reason. Either something's going to come back, but we don't have it yet, or it's a permanent reduction, but we need to transition.
I think it sounds like we can do some modifications to that and propose something that would maybe refer to, that we know are temporary, but then those that we know are permanent, that one might be similar to bullet point two, to that we would find an alternative revenue source or make the expenditure cuts that we wanted to match with that revenue source that was being lost. So, that one will propose up revised language.
Okay.
Awesome. Is there anything else, any other comments about the conditions for using reserves that?
So, are you asking about a particular, I have some questions that go back to the beginning of the reserve section. We just kind of went through it really fast. Are you want to complete your run-through and then I can come back with my questions later?
We can, yeah. So, can you tell me what the, can we run through what the schedule is for this, I mean, so what's the schedule for coming up for council? Tonight, we have our introduction. And I just want to know what our, when is that going?
So, this, for next, we've got July 10th.
Perfect.
And also, a committee work session. August 7th is a public hearing to receive testimony. August 14th is a work session. And then, we've got a line item to say additional work sessions if needed.
Okay.
And then, we've got, we're proposing a September 5th consideration. That's a continuation of the public hearing for consideration of adoption then on September 5th.
Okay. So, what I would propose for tonight is, knowing it's an important document, but also knowing that it's going to be lingering before us for a while and that, for efficiency reasons, to, we know there are questions for Jen tonight. I'll pose those questions to her. And if you, and if you come upon questions later, after tonight, go ahead and send those to Jen. And then, because we are going to have this for a while.
Yes. Also, the risk assessment worksheet?
Yep.
If you'd like If you'd like to complete that, if you've got, like indicated in my emails, that if you've got questions about, about a section, what it means, to give some examples, certainly feel free to ask those in that format, but certainly, if there are questions that we can, we can dive into now.
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to cut off, like just your presentation about that, or what you wanted to tell us about the risk assessment worksheet. So, what I was trying to wrap my arms around a little bit was, Paul, when you mentioned, started wanting to start from the beginning, and you had questions.
About reserves, I spent some time preparing for the meeting. We kind of had ad hoc questioning going on.
Sure, sure, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And so, I wanted to make sure that you have an opportunity to ask all those questions, and so council members know that they can ask them now, they can ask them later. So, I know, Jen, you wanted to talk about the reserve section. Was there something else in here you wanted to point out to us before I start with Paul and allow him to ask you questions?
My primary goal for tonight was, was just reserve section, to make sure that the risk assessment was if there was any questions about logistics on completing that, but certainly is to answer any questions that, that council members did have tonight.
Sure.
So, back in 2.1, under 2.11, non, what's an example of a non-spendable fund balance? We're not familiar with that.
Non, an example of non-spendable fund balance would be an inventory item, or a prepaid expense. So, if you think in terms of the private sector, you've got inventory that you buy, and/or you prepay expenses like insurance premiums. So, those portions that we have, that-
It's encumbered.
Exactly, encumbered. That, it would be a good analogy. That is non-spendable.
Okay.
Or an asset. We can't, in, in utility funds, we can't spend the road, the value of the road.
Oh, and the, and the value of the road is reflected in the fund?
Yes, because it's a, it's a business type, it's a proprietary fund, so you will see that. We try to not go too far into the accounting weeds when we show fund balance, because non-spendable is non-spendable. So, we've-
Okay, thank you for that. In 2.4, under assigned fund balance, later in the paragraph, it's referred to as special revenue. I don't know if that was in, if that's a typo, or are they talking about two different things? Assigned fund balance versus special revenue. Hello, the beginning of the last sentence says, "Special revenue fund balances typically consist of funds."
You said to, Section 2-
2.14.
2.14.
So, I, that, I don't know if that's just an editing thing. I mean, we've talked about special revenue before, but then this is a section about assigned fund balance. Is that another phrase for special revenue?
It's, it's more typical where you see a special revenue fund, where you'll see the, the fund balance is designated as assigned. And so, that's why in, in the policy, why it's referred to here, is that special revenue funds typically consist of funds assigned, and so that's why, it's an example.
So, okay, that's, okay, thank you. So, special revenue, as we know them, is an example of an assigned fund balance?
Yes, it's, it's the best example. You, you might see in, I always use utility funds as an, as an example, you might see a combination of designations. So, you would see unassigned, assigned, committed, and restricted in a, in one utility fund.
All right, thank you. So, not for tonight, but for the future, in 2.5, you completely, if you've got these examples for surplus and deficit on, on assigned fund balance, it'd be good to see a simple example, of, exist examples of that work through.
All right, we'll do.
That would be very helpful, to see an example. And then, moving on down in 2.2, in the second paragraph, where you do, where you make the suggestion, there it is in red, Baby the Range, DVD, should be 15 to 20, and the, the sentence continues, "Of expenditures of a general fund, less annual transfers out to the fund." That sounds funny to me. Less annual transfers out to the fund.
The reason for this proposed language is that, and we can, and we can do some wordsmithing here, but essentially, when you, when you take all of the, all of the expenditures, one of the categories of expenditures is transfers out. But you, you want to remove that from your formula for determining, determining your fund balance.
So, is that transfers out to the fund, or from the fund?
From the fund.
Okay.
They're transfers all, yeah, I mean-
They're just transfers out.
Transfers out that are assigned to that fund.
Exactly.
Or going to go out of that fund.
We'll clean up the, we'll clean up the words, so that it's very clear.
Transfers, transfers out to the fund meant, could have been from other funds coming in, which I didn't think you meant. You mean planned transfers out, they're going to go out to other funds.
Yeah, we'll change that wording, so it's clear.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and then we, we had a conversation about the conditions for using reserves, and that was a really good conversation. I, in the opening paragraph, it says, in the last sentence, so there's the phrase, "The strategy to arrest the future use of fund balance." Strategy to arrest the future use of fund balance. Could you just clarify that for me?
You are in-
Opening paragraph of 2.3, conditions for using reserves.
Okay, I got it, okay. So, so arrest means, I mean, we, we can change the word, so it mean, to be clearer about the fact that you would be, you'd be committing, you'd be encumbering.
Okay, all right.
So, to specifically, I mean, it's almost, I don't want to get too, too deep into the words, because it's, that's like this too much restriction on the use of fund balance.
Okay.
We'll play with some wordsmithing there.
Okay, I appreciate that. And so, I noticed then, and then the bulleted list of four that you have, the conversation we have, and Stacy even used the word, is that she used the word "bridge," like, okay, there's, there's some, something's happened, there's been some, some event, and we know we need to make, we have to get, we have to, we're going to have to make some adjustments. And so, this policy is saying, you know, we can use ending fund balance to bridge ourselves until we have a new model in place, right? A new budget in place. And when I read that, I was wondering about the conversations we've started to have in the finance committee meeting as well, about, about kind of longer-range budgeting, right? Not year-to-year cash flow-based, right? And it, this didn't seem to really account for the fact, you know, we might want to spend, we talked about scenarios where we're actually spending reserve, where revenue, expenditures exceed revenue, so we're spending reserves. But, it's based upon a longer-term forecast, and our model says, you know, we're just bridging over to a time where there's going to be an adjustment, and long-term, we're actually going to be okay. So, that, this section doesn't account for that at all, but then I found down below in 2.7, does say, in replenishment of reserves, it almost, that, that particular section, "Should the assigned fund balance targets fall below 15% of the threshold, the city will strive toward retaining the minimum threshold during the next budget cycle." Okay, you're giving yourself one year, but, but I don't know if you intended that to be maybe some policy to account what we've, what I just talked about, maybe a longer-term-
What I'm, what I'm hearing is that we, we could propose language in the 2.3, that specifically addresses the connection between the long-range financial model, that it-
That's where my, that's where my mind went. I don't know if that was your intent, I don't want to put anything in your, in your mouth there, and what you're thinking, if you had a different intent. But that's where my mind went, but then when I found 2.7, I thought maybe that was it. But then it's limited just to like one year out.
I think to, I like what, what you've identified here, is that, that it would be in the conditions, in a general statement about it being connected to the financial model, but then also there's specific, which is in updated policy, that, and that is one of the things, is that it is ideal to identify what you do with too much reserves, and how you do it, and when you do it, and then what you do with not enough reserves. So, what, what I'm hearing is that we'll add in another proposed bullet under conditions for using that, and refer more to the financial model in that broader language.
So, that would be good to see that come out, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, interesting to see that come out. Then the last comment I have is in 2.8, excess reserves, and I was glad to see this. It says, "Reserves above the targeted reserve levels may be used for new expenditures with emphasis on one-time uses that achieve future operating cost reductions." So, now we're into a list, future operating cost reductions. And it says, "Capital expenditures or prepaying existing debt." And, and, you know, capital expenditures is pretty broad and generic, and I like just to consider language that said something like, and which, which I've been using over the years, is acquire assets with long-term public benefit. Something, we've talked about that, right? Tyler, Tola, you brought that up not long ago, in a meeting, where, okay, if we're going to spend, spend it on something capital, it's, it's for some asset that we're going to get a long-term benefit from.
Okay, I've got that.
So, those are my comments for the reserves, thank you.
Any other comments on the reserve section?
This one, General and Jen, and that is where you have put in numbers, and still finding it a little confusing to understand.
How I would say, yes, 10% is better than whatever we used to have, and so, how do we, do we understand where your proposal is versus where we used to be versus how that test service?
So, are you referring to the general fund?
I'm just looking down at the, you know, there's seizure fund, REIT fund, wherever there's other little red numbers that say, well, let's make it 30, and whatever.
So, you're asking for a rationale behind why those numbers have been proposed?
The comparison.
Kind of just so, we were here, you're recommending this, and if I was to think about from a risk point of view, are you being more conservative than we used to be? Are you saying we should have some exposure there that we didn't have before? Just so I can get my head around it, because I'm not sure.
And I think, one, and one of the things that, after we've got, we've got the risk assessment worksheets done, then we'll be able to have, dive a little bit more into the conversation about why, why that's proposed to be changed. Because that will daylight some of the reasons why it may change from 15 to 20 to 25 to 40. That was all that I had for tonight for policy, because of the, of the importance and the typical robust discussions about fund balance and reserves, so that's all I have.
Want to move on to the risk assessment form?
Yes.
Did you have, so you would like us to fill these out?
Yes.
And are they available? Do you have any specific instructions for us, or are they, and are they electronic? And what, what do you need us to know about these? And what's the deadline? What's the penalty if you don't fill it out?
It's homework.
Is that alone, that's a risk assessment that I'm going to do?
Yes, it is a spreadsheet that, that was, was sent to everyone today, and so, there are multiple tabs in the workbook, and they're, they're kind of chunked out in categories. And so, the, the best place to start is the first tab that says, that's basically kind of your, that's where the numbers are going to kind of tally up. But, that's where the instructions are, and that's where it says example ranges and what it means, and so I encourage you to read, read that. If anything, in some of the categories, where you're, where you're kind of, just kind of plugging in your thoughts, and it says A, B, and C. So, if you start at the top to say, essentially, what are our, our risks? So, for example, revenues, or to identify the sources of revenue. So, I'll just kind of walk through quickly. We've got sales tax, and we've got B and O tax, and we've got property tax. If you, if you just had those, the next section is, is that, well, what could go wrong with those types of revenues? Sales tax is very volatile, so if we had a downturn, you know, so that would kind of identify. So, it's, it's more so for you to put down your thoughts about each of those categories. If anything, at, at the bottom of each of those tabs in the workbook, there's where you're going to plug in, you're going to plug in your assessment, you know, one through five. Five being, you know, really risky, and one being not, but it gives you some guidance about why you might pick that number. The, the top part of that is essentially kind of your, your thoughts, your notes to guide your, the number that you plug in. If you go through all of those worksheets, on that, that first tab, it will tally up for you and tell you, it will give a score based on your assessment. And then you would take that score, and you could look in those ranges to say, well, you know, my perception is that, you know, we would have this level of reserves. And so, that's essentially the gist of the worksheet. Save it, return it to me, and then the next step is, what I'll do is, we'll combine kind of a summary to say, the, this is kind of the average range that, that came up, and my, my typical practice is that I'll, I'll kind of put some comments out there in a, in a document, not that we highlight, you know, oh, Stacy risk, you know, scored this way, and Tola scored this way, but it's more so of a, here's a general assessment of the council, the administration SLT is going to be doing the same thing, you know, doing their worksheets, you can see how those scores come in, and it really starts to synthesize, and you'll, we'll start to see that, you know, that identified range, and so, and so it's interesting to see where some perceive certain types of revenues, or certain type of expenditure volatility, or even in the capital, capital project section, so it, it's quite an interesting exercise to go through.
And I would think that you might be available to help with questions?
Absolutely.
And what's the, what's the deadline?
Well, the deadline with our, with our next meeting being July 10th, and to give us an opportunity to basically assemble all of those responses, it would be ideal that we had that by, if we could do it within 10 days or so, so by June 22nd would be helpful, give us, to ensure that we can get that published and, you know, in the agenda packets prior to, it'd be great. Tola?
So, so there's a leverage tab. What does leverage mean in this context?
My best example of leverage is, is about debt. Oftentimes, I'll just give an example of if there was the, if we didn't have a lot of debt, and we didn't essentially use our, our ability to leverage debt in order to do, make capital investments, that can be a risk, that if we, if we aren't issuing debt, or we're waiting, we're waiting to collect and combine, basically pay for things in cash, that can be a risk. So, your, your ending fund balances would then be, you know, the need for that would be huge, because you, in order for you to make investments in your capital, capital assets, if there is, if there is the risk that you're always having to wait before you do something, that essentially is leveraging. So, you're, you're leveraging the use of debt and your ability to do that.
But, but that specific item seems covered under capital projects, because capital projects, a five says there are very high-profile projects without a funding source, and reserves are likely to be considered as a funding source. And then one is all high-priority capital projects have a funding source. So, that's, that seems like another way of saying the same thing that you just said.
No, leveraging is the one.
It's, it, it could be perceived as, as the same, but it, it's more so of the leverage, it's, it's the mindset, or it's the, you know, the, it's, and then some of those questions is the political will, you know, in order to issue debt, to pay for things now, and, and then have future, you know, have your, have your growth essentially pay for that. So, it is a bit different. I can send out some more information about leverage, I think that might be helpful.
I would just add, in general, to these categories, maybe a little bit more definition for each of them. We can look at the, the scoring that you got, and you can start to infer, but I think maybe each of them needs a little bit more definition, I think it will help with the guidance.
Yeah.
One thing, mechanically, the link that you sent, you actually didn't send the spreadsheet, you sent, in your email, that's attached to it, is a link to a version that's on the cloud. So, if you double-click to open that, we'd all be editing the same version.
Oh, my apologies.
Which is fine, which is fine. We can each click on edit in Excel there, brings it up on your desktop, and you save your own copy, or you could just send out a original copy.
I will send out an, an actual attachment. My, my apologies, that is coming from SharePoint, it's our Office 365, so-
You'll learn when you do an attachment, you have a choice now.
Yes.
You can do that, so you'll get, you'll, I'm sure you'll learn that.
Yes.
Okay.
Look for that later this evening.
What else do we have on our agenda?
It's all for-
Do we have, Jen?
Yeah, the German.
That's it?
That's it.